Welcome to the special meeting of the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority. And thank you all for being here, particularly Dr. Cash and the members of the school district and the school board. We appreciate you spending your time here with us today to work on our issues of finances. This special meeting was called for the sole purpose to discuss financial matters involving the Buffalo City School District. And again, joining us today are President Sharon Belton Cotman, Superintendent Cash, and District Chief Financial Officer Jeff Pritchard. Thanks again for coming and meeting with us. Before we begin, I will take the role, Chair Olten, excuse today, Vice Chair Jurisak.
Present.
Here. Secretary Floss is present. Director San Filippo?
Here.
Present. Okay. County Executive Polling Cars, Ben?
Present.
Present. And Donna Estridge for Mayor Brown?
Present.
Thank you, everyone. We have a quorum, and we will begin our meeting. The board package provided for you this meeting includes a staff report comparing the draft budget as reviewed by the board on May 19th and compared with the district's final adopted budget, 2021-2022 budget. There have been no changes made to the remaining years of the financial plan. Nathan has prepared a brief presentation to review the changes in the draft and the adopted budget, as well as a high-level summary of the financial plan. Nathan, would you begin the presentation?
Just pulling up the presentation now. Good. Very good. Good afternoon. The following is the Buffalo City School District's 2021, excuse me, 2122 final budget and 2225 financial plan analysis. The draft budget and adopted financial plan analysis was provided back on May 19th at the board meeting. The FSA issued a comprehensive report detailing this analysis. This presentation focuses on the changes between the draft and the adopted budgets. The 2122 draft budget and 2225 financial plan was submitted to the BFA on April 30th, 2021. The financial plan was approved on April 21st. This included a deficit of $29 million budgeted for fiscal year 2122. Each out-year of the financial plan contained a surplus. The adopted budget was approved back on May 19th, 2021. This includes a $29 million fund balance appropriation due to the timing difference between the incursion of transportation expenditures and the related transportation aid. Just going to move this over. Oops. New York State's finances have been deeply impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting recession. DOB estimated that the pandemic recession decreased New York State revenues in the excess of $10 billion. The United States Congress passed several pieces of legislation to address the pandemic to and/or to aid in the economic recovery. There's three large pieces of legislation here. The first is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act passed in March of 2020. This created an educational stability fund and provided New York State with $13.5 billion for their ESSER fund. The district received a $29 million portion of that as a federal restoration aid. It offset the pandemic adjustment that New York State imposed on the district for dollar for dollar. The second was the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act of 2021. This was passed back in December of 2020, and in total totaled $1.4 trillion. Of this, the district will receive $88.6 million in ESSER II funding. And then the final main piece of legislation passed was the American Rescue Plan, signed in March of 2021. It totaled $1.9 trillion. And of that, the district will receive about $201 million in ESSER III funding over the next three fiscal years. The New York State 2021 enacted budget and related four-year financial plan provides the district with substantial foundational aid increases. The year-to-year increase in New York State foundation aid is $67.5 million, about 8%, with foundation aid totaling $747.2 million within the enacted budget. Also, eliminated was the pandemic adjustment going forward. This adjustment reduced New York State aid by $29 million in the current fiscal year. This was backfilled by the CARES Federal Restoration Aid previously mentioned. New York State passed legislation which says that they are expecting to fully fund foundation aid by fiscal year 2324. This provides an additional 4.5% increase annually from 2223 through 2324. So in total, the financial plan includes $122.7 million in incremental foundational aid. In addition to New York State aid, the district has been awarded unprecedented levels of federal aid to address a multitude of pandemic-related issues. We review this, the three main pieces of legislation. Essentially, where the district is at right now is that they're required to develop a spending plan by July 1st and are currently soliciting public input through a variety of sources, including stakeholder meetings and other ways of public feedback. The final, final version of it will have, of course, district input, board member input, as well as community input. The total amount of federal stimulus aid addressed within the plan is $289.6 million. So taking a look at the financial plan, revenues were unchanged in the adopted budget from the draft budget. Expenditures were unchanged overall. There were some minor adjustments within several of the employee compensation and some of the miscellaneous expenditure lines. About $1.4 million in both of those buckets moved around based on the final school-based budgets. This takes a look at the fiscal year 2122 general fund revenues. Completely the same as they were presented within the draft budget. This table takes a look at the smile, the minor differences between the draft budget and the adopted budget. As you can see, employee compensation was increased by $1.4 million. Benefits were unchanged. And all other expenditures were reduced by $1.4 million. These are just the modifications which occurred, reflecting the final budgets, school-based budgets, and represent about a tenth of 1% of the total. There were, the total number of full-time equivalent employees was unchanged in the staffing plan. There were some adjustments within specific employee lines, and they're summarized within this table. Significantly, the district added 10 full-time equivalent teacher positions. It's highlighted within the May 19th report, all collective bargaining agreements have labor agreements which have either expired or scheduled to expire by June 30th, 2022. There is a proposed labor agreement that was submitted for BFSA's review with the teacher aides and teaching assistants, which is represented by BAST. The 2122 adopted budget and the financial plan do not accrue compensation or benefit increases associated with settled expiring labor agreements. However, the district did provide an estimate for the incremental cost to settle all of these labor agreements. That was estimated at $9.9 million. The financial plan included a total of $9 million in assigned fund balance specifically for this purpose. So the set aside would be insufficient to settle the cumulative $39.6 million that the district estimated to settle all outstanding labor agreements. This table takes a look at the fund balance status. Fund balance is at the highest level that it's been at since BFSA's inception. It is projected to be $285 million at June 30th, 2021. And taking out the $29 million that would be appropriated for the next year's budget, fund balance would be equal to $258 million over the three out-years of the financial plan.
56.
Oh, yes. Pardon me. 256 million. This, these two tables take a look at the various grant funds. They were presented all within the Special Projects Fund as draft in the May 19th. Since that time, the district has decided that Special Projects Fund will include the New York State and federal grants and foundational grants, but that the ESSER II and ESSER III funds would be accounted for within separate funds. And so this table takes a look, shows what the Special Projects Fund is as adopted, $103.5 million, and then provides an image of what the draft budgets would be for ESSER II and ESSER III at $115.8 million in 2122. So that, that concludes my summary of the changes within the draft budget and adopted budget.
Thank you, Nathan. Now, I guess we will turn to Jeanette, who would like to summarize some of the requests and questions that the board had from the original budget. Jeanette, could you do that at this time, please?
Yes, thank you. So what I did was I took a look through the notes from some of our board meetings that we've held over the last year, and I took all the questions that the directors had at the meetings, and I put them into basically three buckets to streamline the conversation with the superintendent and the other officials from the district. So the three buckets of questions that were asked to be discussed include, the first one was, what is the continued school reopening plan and what are the related projected costs of those plans? The second category was, what are the projections for programs above and beyond those currently provided to address the achievement gap that has occurred during the period of the pandemic? And the third is, what is the planned use of federal aid provided pursuant to the federal aid stimulus packages that were provided to the school district? Verbally discussed, one of the directors had a question last morning regarding the status of labor contracts. I know Nathan mentioned in his presentation, we did receive the best proposed, best labor contract submission last week, and we're going to have that on our board meeting agenda for our next regular board meeting on June 21st. Thank you.
So I don't know, Superintendent Cash, do you want to answer any of these, or would you like one of the other members to answer these questions?
Board members, Cotman and Woods, what is your pleasure? You like, or you want to answer?
No, I feel that the superintendent, you can answer these questions if there are things that, Board Member Woods, who is our Finance and Ops Chair, who has extensive experience in budgeting, has anything to add, and I have anything to add with that, we will find, and Jeff Pritchett also will tune in. And my concern here is, is that, and I will go on, I'd like to go on record with that, is that my concern here appears to be reaching the finance piece, the financial piece is fine, but it appears that we are reaching into areas that, at this point, we are incomplete in many of our aspects, and we're still presenting things to the state and under federal guidelines. And I'm not exactly sure what is the nature of your request, because unless I recently overlooked something or whatever, between what is required by the state and the federal government and our deadlines, that we are outside of those guidelines at this point. So I'm wondering exactly, what are you hoping to accomplish by having these questions answered, other than the financial piece? The academic piece is what I'm questioning, because at this point, we are still working on many of these plans, according to the deadlines that we were given under these grants and COVID relief program, ESSER funds, 1, 2, et cetera. So that's what my question is basically. Are you hoping to accomplish, or what are we trying to accomplish here today in regards to asking us questions relative to the academic piece of this district?
I think to some extent, President Belton Cotman, I think part of it is just that the different rules that have been written between, you know, the BFSA law and the pandemic rules sort of crossed to some extent. So we're trying to follow our mission, which is to do a thorough review at an appropriate time of the financial issues and your future plans. Now, those may, in many cases, and I think it's a perfectly legitimate thing to say, that we're still working on them. And, but from our perspective, to try to get a better understanding and to make recommendation, is to hear at least what you think you're doing and where you're going. I know that the federal rules and regs have been changing, and we're trying to all adjust to those. You know, I know Directors Estridge and, you know, Swanton Camp have also been dealing with all of these issues as well. One of the fundamental questions that I've had in all of this is that are we working as a community together? Because it's not only the school board that's getting these monies, there's higher ed getting these monies, the counties getting these monies, the city and the towns are all getting these monies. And looking at the rules and regs, and this is just from my perspective, that there are places where we might be able, if we start these discussions like we're having today, we might be able to work together and use our money in ways that may be more effective. The other thing is, I think, in a number of cases, given the new rules and regs, it looks like some groups, some towns in particular, may end up having extra money, and that if we can work together, we might be able to, in fact, bring money back to the community that would have to go back to the federal government. So I think part of what I'm hoping to do today is to start that discussion in a, in a public forum, to be able to make sure, one, that you can spend all of your money. There may be ways, for example, UB and Buffalo State may be able to work with you to spend additional amounts of this money that might be helpful. There may be ways for the city or the county to do that as well. So I'm hoping to start that discussion, and I hope you take it in the way that we're trying to move forward. So thank you.
Certainly, we appreciate that, that approach. We need to be clear, and I'm sure you understand that this money comes with specific guidelines and requirements, many of which are to include the community. Somehow or another, it is often mistaken that the board does not represent the community. However, each board member is elected to represent their constituents as well as the community in large. And so I am proud to say that this particular board is very much connected and vested with their community. But however, I will say this, is that, as with anything, there are always going to be those who are saying that their voice is not being heard. That is not true in our district, because they are at every meeting. So if their voice is not being heard, I don't know who's not listening, but certainly we have very competent people in our, in our family and student and family engagement department that works intimately with these individuals to try to get them to be more active. We are in the process of expanding our parent congress in order to bring in more parent groups. And so we certainly want to make sure that the community needs are met. And when I say the community, I'm talking about the Buffalo-New York community, not the suburban community, et cetera. I'm talking about Buffalo-New York. So we have a lot of people who are saying that they are representing our community, and they don't even live in the city of Buffalo. So we want to make sure that our community is represented, meaning the constituents of the Buffalo Public Schools District and their families and our community supports. So we're here to answer your questions. We just want to make sure that you understand that we do not have all of our, all of the answers at this point. We are still working out, working them out. The superintendent on Friday had a retreat with his cabinet in order to start preparing and formulating the recommendations and suggestions that we heard over the three community meetings that we had. It is our intent to continue to have community meetings. And in moving forward, we cannot do this, we cannot continue to educate our children without making sure that we have much more community involvement. We need our parents involved in our school system, and we recognize that. And we need to enhance that. And we've done a phenomenal job over the past five years, but we still have a lot of ways to go. So yes, we're happy to be here. We want to answer your questions, but we need to be real specific. When you start getting involved into the academic piece, I get a little concerned, because it appears as if we are, and I certainly, you know, I don't want to say this in a negative way, but it appears as if we're, we're going in areas that this, this particular board has never gone into, other than under, when Pam Brown, Dr. Pam Brown was in this district, which was upwards of over eight or more years ago. So that, that was my concern in approaching this, because we certainly have competent people in our district who are capable of dealing with the academic piece. And I don't, I want to make sure that, that it is clear that this, that is not what this board is insinuating by asking these questions. And that's what my concern is with.
And let me, you know, assure you that, you know, we are a financial board, trying to look at, you know, the financial implications, to the extent that that goes to the quality of education or the number of students that are in the district and things like that. Those questions, I think, are legitimate, but we do not question at all the competency of the academic side and the academic mission of either the board or the superintendent, or in fact, the teachers that are teaching in the schools. I think it's important that we, you understand that we're trying to support all of you, and to be able to do that, we need to be able to make the best possible case, which means coming here today and hopefully having this out on YouTube and having this available to the community, that we're able to support you and grow the Buffalo Public Schools in a positive light. And that, and that's really what we're here to do. I mean, we're not here to take over what's rightfully the job, the job, excuse me, of the Board of Education. And we don't believe that we represent the community in the way that you do. And we think that you take your jobs very seriously, and we really do appreciate that you're doing that. We're just trying to do our job as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad. That housekeeping is out of the way. Now, if you have questions in regards to, your first question is, you had a request in regards to school reopening plan and related costs. I'm sure the three items that you listed, we are prepared to address those questions today. Dr. Cash and Jeff Pritchett are very competent, and we're ready for that. So I'm glad to know that we are working together and that you appreciate what's going on inside of our district. That makes us feel warm and fuzzy. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Secretary Floss, is it? If, if someone could restate for us the first three questions, I think you had three questions that sort of dealt with.
Sure. I'll, I'll turn over to Jeanette. And Jeanette, if you want to ask the questions within the three categories, maybe at a time, that might be good.
Sure, absolutely. So the first question was, what is the continued school reopening plan and the related projected costs for the school reopening plan?
Second.
The second, the second is, what are the projections for programs above and beyond those that are currently provided to address the achievement gap that occurred during the pandemic?
Third.
And the third is, what's the planned use for the federal aid stimulus dollars provided to the district? There obviously could be some overlap there.
So colleagues, thank you for inviting us today, and thank you to Board Member, President, Board President Cotman for those sort of opening remarks. I think they're important to, to digest. And thank you for BFSA response to those initial concerns. So needless to say, these three questions, I did hear them right, and they are whoppers. Okay? These are huge questions. And they're the questions that everyone wants to know, and everyone should know. But bear with me, and let me try to be helpful in addressing them in as clear and thorough a way as possible, but with still the caveat that some of this is developing and some of this scaffolding, enormous scaffolding that is required and going to be required going forward to, to, to give a thorough answer. It's going, it's ongoing. So on the first question, there's two types of reopening, colleagues. I just want you to clarify. I consider this whole year as being a reopening influx. And as you know, the first part of the year, the great majority of the year, we reopened in a remote learning environment where students were at home, learning with mobile device computer laptops. On February 1st of 2021, we began the first phase of a four-phase reopening plan for students to come in person, inviting students to come in person, and for those who opted to remain home and remote, they could do so. And so at this point, we have gone through those four phases with board support throughout, and with the very thoughtful and consistent advice of what we call a Health Advisory Council that has been advising us all year long about safety and the status of the coronavirus in our community, and particularly as it affects the population and makeup of our school district, the demographics of our school district. So when we talk about reopening, if you're talking about that, that's one thing I can answer for the, for now and the remainder of the year. But if you're also talking about reopening for September of 2021, this fall, then that's a different kind of response. So what of the two types of reopening are you referring to?
I think our question from a financial standpoint is, how much of the funding have you used during the first phase of the reopening this year? And then, what percentage of the funding do you believe you're going to be using in September to go forward? And if Uh, and if I can add a, a, a little bit of a wrinkle to that, um, are you working with the city and the state, for example, on stronger broadband and is that part of your reopening plan? And is there a funding portion to that? Are we looking to use school district money? Do we think that that money is only going to come from the state? Uh, is there going to be a combination of funds that we might use? Um, and have, I mean, have you had discussions? The answer could be, we haven't gotten that far yet. And that's a perfectly fine answer, but I hope that helps.
Okay, so it is a combination then of both, it's sort of both. I would say for this year, um, for what we budgeted and then what we anticipated as the year went forward uh, with some assistance from the state, uh, the smart school bond money, for example, helping us with uh, additional resources for providing mobile devices and internet access. Uh, state was helpful, uh, but so, so were local partnerships. Uh, for example, with the mayor's office, with the city, with Spectrum News itself or Spectrum cable company itself, um, and with the Buffalo Bills, uh, for example. And, and other uh, community-based partnerships were very helpful this year in that whole area of IT uh, support. Um, going forward, that will be a, uh, what I'm calling a key strategic investment. And there's sort of five major areas of key strategic investment uh, that align with what we're hearing from the community, that align with what I've heard so far um, from the board. Um, but probably most importantly, align with what I call uh, 10 fault lines. And, and by fault line, that means that there are issues based on data that are suggesting that we need to make greater uh, more intentional strategic investment uh, in these areas, um, because of the data that is coming forth uh, over the course of this year and even pre-COVID, we knew some things that we, if we could, if we ever got the dollars to do it, uh, we would shore up these, these areas and these fault lines or these stages uh, that, that I'm calling strategic investments. So going forward, uh, IT is just one of five major, five major buckets, if you will. And then I break, we break those down into 10 overall. And they align, try to move, move the needle in these areas. So, so, so the five are investments in top-notch instructional materials. While we have in many ways been lauded or lauded for our top academic curricular materials for reading and math, for example, and writing. Uh, there are other areas that we want to continue to uh, grow greater equity, access, opportunity and quality. Greater access, equity, opportunity and quality. Those four um, areas or dimensions of our work are what is driving, will drive us going forward for moving requests or investments up to the top, to the top. Access, equity, opportunity and quality. So that area, we're very um, competent in. We know where we need to look for science, greater science uh, materials, language, world languages. Um, you know, all of the content of high school, uh, creating more elective opportunities and so forth for our students. Uh, and I, and again, that are all, that's all being worked on. But you can note it as a major strategic investment um, that will uh, have considered or cost to go with it. But it's, it's needed. It's much needed and, and will be spent wisely. A second area, as I've begun to say, is investment in pre-K to 12 uh, curriculum and coursework. Uh, and the PD that goes along with that, that does provide, as I said, the access, the equity, the quality and the, and the uh, opportunity. So greater rigor at each point along the way, pre-K to three, uh, great upper elementary, four and five. Uh, the middle school area needs a lot more uh, attention, strategic attention on six, seven and eight. And then the high school uh, in, in these areas as well. And we've begun to align and put into place um, what kind of partnerships um, we need to have in order to help us strengthen in that area. Another, a third strategic investment is in the whole area of student support services. And that involves the trauma, anxiety, mental health, depression, eating disorders, etc. A lot of things that we are seeing um, start to have data on that suggest that some of these issues have become more acute uh, during the pandemic. And so we'll be making uh, strong strategic investments in our uh, student support services uh, area of our work. A fourth is, and this is important to understand, it's not just adding a lot of people. Uh, for, for adding people's sake, it's about what kind of capacity do you need to build into the organization in order to execute on these new plans and these new strategic investments? And so you will see some very um, strategic staffing being made in, so we can build our capacity. And in the human capital uh, area, we'll, we need to um, manage our uh, particularly our administrative staff have a whole performance management uh, dimension added into, into that work that we've never had before. Uh, at least not as strong as I intend to make it, so that we can get the results that we need um, through, from these, from these investments. But also the issue along this, this big bucket is talent development, talent recruitment, talent support and retention. It's thin, it's thin in our field right now because of what's happening in higher education, because of what's happening over the next several years and, and expected retirements. We're gonna hit a cliff in just a few years with teachers retiring, uh, with many others in different employee categories uh, retiring. And so we're going to need to make sure that we can continue to draw talent into the district and support it and have what we call a strong succession plan. Succession planning is essential in any organization, but it will be especially essential for the Buffalo Public Schools in the, in the years ahead. And then of course, finally, for now, just a big bucket that a lot of this is coming into, a lot of these requests are coming into, is in the whole area of um, technology, instructional technology, uh, investments in information technology, digital resources, IT security, uh, infrastructure rebuild and buildup and so forth. Uh, will be a significant area for continued investment. Now, if you want to break it down, then what about the core business? Uh, again, I have, I have, we, we have some areas that the data is showing and uh, requests are coming in around prenatal health and early parenting. Making sure all of our parents and families um, have the support they need to develop healthy babies, healthy children. Uh, this is a challenge in our community. Um, and so we want to seal uh, some of that fault line uh, in that whole prenatal health and early parenting. High-quality early learning, um, we've done a lot in this area over the last five years, but it will continue to be an emphasis and a, and a strategic matter of import around every child, every at-risk child should have a quality preschool and every child should be in a high-quality kindergarten. And then on into grade, up to grade two, the first seven or eight years of, of life uh, should be highly supported with uh, extraordinary resources to support early literacy and numeracy. Uh, great teachers and leaders at all of our schools uh, is a continuing aim. Um, and we will continue to develop multi-strategies to ensure that there's a great teacher in every in front of every child and every subject every day. And every school has a good administrative team, strong, well, uh, educated and skilled administrative team. Instructional reform, technology and higher standards is a, is another investment area. As we're breaking down those five buckets that I gave you earlier, now we're going into uh, 10 uh, sub areas that this data is starting to fall into. It's the scaffolding, the framework, if you will. Uh, student supports, academic health and mental health. Uh, those all will have milestones and benchmarks associated with them. And we will strengthen our partnerships in the community to make sure our students have strong academic health and mental health uh, supports and programming uh, going forward. We have some now, but we'll continue to strengthen those. Post-secondary preparation beginning in middle and high school. Um, Dr. Uh, sorry, President Compton talks about STEM programming. Uh, I'm a strong believer in strong STEM programs, especially at certain stages of, of a child's career. And we need to start and strengthen STEM, I believe, in the middle school uh, in particular. And then see if we can grow that on, from there. Uh, parent and community engagement, not involvement, engagement. Again, President Compton talked about, uh, this is gonna continue to be a 50-50 bargain. We're gonna guarantee greater access, equity, quality and opportunity. But the parents and the community and the students themselves have to step up and do their part of what this all means. Students, for example, you gotta be in school every day, all day. That's a non-negotiable, every day, all day. Unless you're sick, not feeling well, you're expected to be in school every day, all day. And then you have to study for 10,000 hours for 10 straight years, seven to 17, eight to 18, if, if you're in that, in that uh, age span outside of school. And so that, that amounts to two, two and a half hours per day is what that uh, breaks down and equates to. Um, post-secondary completion. College, uh, the elephant in the room is, yes, you can graduate from high school, but unless, that doesn't mean anything anymore. You gotta graduate from high school and go on into post-secondary world or the world of work with a skill set right there. And so that's what we want to make sure. This is a pre-K to 16, pre-K to 20 kind of a collaboration going forward with our higher education institutions who need to improve their completion rates for students as well. The graduation rates at, at too many of our colleges and universities are low. And I want to make sure that we have programs that assure completion of post-secondary uh, education. And so you'll see a lot of work there. Two more, the career pathways and workforce development is a whole opportunity to again, engage with the city and engage with the county around workforce about development and career pathways after high school. And there has to be a lot of, a lot more intentionality about getting our kids internships and even CEO opportunities to see what you can be from our, uh, most talented high school graduates. About 200 per year graduate that should be in your companies and in your organizations being developed so that the diversity and workforce inclusion and opportunities grow for our kids. Uh, it's, it's not diverse enough in Buffalo and the gainful employment opportunities are poor. So we're gonna be working to strengthen uh, those pathways. And then finally, again, talent outreach, recruitment and development. Uh, our tal- our students are talented, our students are genius uh, and resilient, quite frankly. And, and we want to make sure that all of our um, entities in this Western New York, in Erie County and in Buffalo uh, see our children and put them at promise um, rather than at risk. And, and that is how we're gonna be working with you uh, to make sure that you grow the talent that exists in our schools, you see our kids as assets. And uh, you'll see a much greater Buffalo as a result. Quality of life will go up for everyone. And so these are just some areas where what I read in the papers that are coming up now from the community hearings, when I say the paper, the listings that they're, we would like this, we would like that, they'll fit well into this framework. And then of course, there's a number of other buckets like capital development and improvement of our buildings. Uh, athletics is a big topic that a lot of people want to see. Uh, and then some more CTE programming uh, for, for our youngsters and so forth and so on. Uh, but I wanted to give you a flavor of what I think uh, is responsive or what I feel is responsive to, to that second and third uh, question. So uh, if there's still other questions, uh, again, I'm prepared to, to respond further.
So do you?
That might give you a flavor of what we're, what we're working on right now.
It does. There's obviously a huge need in our school district to be able to do that. I guess our question is, you know, financially, one, how can we help you uh, as the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority? But two, uh, obviously, they're going to be, have to be put together a set of priorities on the financial issues that we're looking at. So how much of this do we think we're going to be able to do within the budgets, including the new federal monies that we have? How much of a gap do we think we need to try to come up and find a way to fund? And if that becomes a problem, is there a way for us to help you work with other work, other, whether it's other organizations, whether they be colleges or the city or whatever, to meet some of these goals? Because obviously you've talked about a lot of things that I think um, there can be a lot of collaboration from a financial standpoint that we can do grants, whether they're from, you know, your health and nutrition from the UV Medical School or some of your educational things. And, and I will say that my department, the Economics and Finance Department that I'm chair of at Buffalo State is more than willing to work with you. And I think for 20 or 25 years, we had taken on Lafayette as a school that we always went in and worked with. Uh, but we're willing to obviously do a lot of those things. But from the BFSA standpoint, the real question, and now I see where President Compton is coming from. You know, we're looking at it from a financial standpoint. So we know, here's what we need. We, now can we figure out what the gap is? And then are we going to prioritize things and realize we're never going to get there? Which is always going to be true. And then what part of the gap can we work with you to try to fill to make you more successful? Are there recommendations that this board can make that will help you be more successful? And part of our goal is BFSA, part of this review process is to be able to be a second set of eyes and ears to help have these kinds of discussions with you that maybe you couldn't have for whatever reason outside of, you know, having the stability authority here to do that. I think we've done a pretty good job with the city uh, in being able to have those discussions and move the budget in the right direction and help um, make some of those decisions. Hopefully, and I, I want to thank all of you for coming, we can, we can do some of the same kind of work for you. Uh, Jeanette, do you want to say anything before we go on? I know I'm taking up too much of the time, so.
Fred, uh, am I muted or can, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Jeanette.
Um, Dr. Cash, this is Director Jurisak. And um, uh, that was a uh, superb um, su- super compelling um, capture of a strategic plan. And uh, on target and compelling. And um, Director Floss's question is uh, m- my question um, with a, a little bit of um, modification. Um, it's the question of It's the question of, they're at the strategic plan level, those are all essential and desirable. And what is fundable is the ugly dynamic inside of your strategic vision. When do you think you will be able to articulate from the strategic vision that you shared with us? What is fundable? And here's what we're going to do during the three years of federal extraordinary support. And here's how we're going to fund it after the end of the federal stimulus and rescue support. So the two questions, my version on Dr. Floss, it might, my two questions are, when will you have the reduced version of your strategic vision? When will you have it in terms of what is fundable, sustainable, sustainable, two and a half years from now?
So that, that is an excellent question. And the way we're approaching it is in two parts, which your question is in two parts. The first part is sort of, what is the big picture document that will lay all of this out, including the feedback from all the community, all of the major stakeholders and so forth? And on that, we're trying, because we are working, believe me, day, night, weekends, to put something very cogent, very clear, very actionable together by July 1. That is our, our target. And that's only a couple of weeks away, only a couple of weeks away. And then we're working on a five-year plan to answer your question. We're not working on a year-by-year or a two-and-a-half-year, and then you're, you're done, you spent all your money, and now what? No, it's a five-year plan with the goal to try to get roots, get it into the tissue of the organization so that we can run for five, 10, 15 years. We, we need a long-term run on a really, really great strategic opportunity that involves the entire community in so many ways. There are a lot of things that affect our students negatively and hinder their success that are community-wide kinds of things. And so we have as part of our partnership work where we can share funds or we can collaborate to share funds to work on issues like health and wellness. That shouldn't just be something that the school system is providing. Even though we do a, an amazing job in that, that's something that there are many good community partners here in Buffalo that we wanna bring under one tent and strategically aim at what affects our, our young people and address it and resolve it, have metrics to show as we go the success we're having. Things like community literacy, not just for our babies and our young people, but you have a, a, not a good community literacy rate here in Buffalo. So that's among adults, for example. It's one of the worst in the country. So we need to continue to work to get more of our adults who often are relatives and family of our, of our students and, and your, you know, friends and family. We need to get them educated, get them learning how to read, and then they can go quickly and get back on ramp for a gainful employment opportunity. So community literacy is something. Acute poverty, there's no reason why Buffalo has to continue for decade after decade to be second worst in the country for children poverty and third worst in the country for poverty overall. It just got, we have to break that cycle. Now, education's a part of it, but it's not the only part that's affecting it. There's a lot of other pernicious policies that occur around things like design segregation, violence in the city, economic segregation, and so far, that, that's where I would like to see you partner with us to start to break some of these cycles and, and help our children get out of poverty once and for all, as well as their families. Lead exposure, brown fields, radioactive waste and, and materials in places around where our children live, that's something that's gotta be addressed and worked on as, as a city and as a community. So there's gonna be a lot of opportunities that this money, we can take bigger bites out of things that are affecting the success of our kids in ways that you may not be aware of, but I'm aware of as an educator, how these are non-school issues, but they affect the growth, the development and the cognition development of our, of our children. So this is gonna be an exciting time. It's an important historic time, but I agree with you, though those of you who have said it, that it's got to be a community-wide effort, everybody being efficient and effective at what we're trying to do. So I'm gonna lay and get that plan out to everyone as soon as possible with board vetting first, and then let's go to work. Let's go to work.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
So one of the things that the board did this year was invest in a, a framework or a, a program. It's a coursework that's with the Great Council of Great City Schools, which is dealing with student outcome focused. And so when Dr. Cash mentioned that he was playing, and we've talked about this, him and I, he has already utilized this framework with, in another state, I believe it was in Tennessee. And it was so successful that the President of the United States came to see the program. So one of the things we have, and I've talked to the majority of the board in regards to working with us, with me, as well as the framework that I'm being taught through the Council of Great City Schools, to focus in on student outcome focus. And so you, you look at goals, we'll take Dr. Cash's goals, or we'll set up goals, we'll set up interim goals, we'll set up interim goals, excuse me, we'll set up measurements, SMART goals, if you're familiar with SMART goals, we'll set up SMART goals, and we'll monitor moving forward. The board will spend more time focused on student outcome. The understanding throughout the country and the way that great boards are functioning at this level is that they become more student outcome focused. So a lot of time is spent in the boardroom. More time on our board will be spent on the student outcome focuses. And what we have found through the research and the information, and hopefully we'll be able to start this as soon as this month, by the end of this month at the, or 1st of July, in which the board will focus in on doing more student outcome focused results for our children. And that will help also guide and, 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 and set the tone and the expectations from the top of the board now. And so we're looking forward to that somewhat of a paradigm shift where we start focusing in on the goals that are established. So I wanted to share that with you. In addition to that, over a year ago, the board set up a, passed a unanimously passed a, an equity resolution. And this resolution is designed to provide resources for all children. If you understand what equity is about, you understand that no one gets left out of the formula for equity. And so as a result of that, I am working with the New York State School Boards Association under their diverse Equity and Inclusion Committee, and we're focusing in on policies and procedures that interfere with the opportunity of children to receive equity solutions. So, and, and Dr. Cash has been grooming his staff to appreciate that. It also ties into our culturally relevant initiative that we're doing, where all children, all, all people, all cultures are relevant in this equation. And so know that not only is it this, this type of progress happening at a, at a administration level, it is also moving into the boardroom as well. And so our expectations are, is that the board will focus more in the aspect of outcomes for student success. So we're looking forward to that. And I just wanted to share that with you so that you can understand where we are heading as, as a district. Thank you.
Thank you, President Kotman. Andy, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Ben?
Well, actually, I, I apologize. Actually, I'm kind of impressed with Dr. Cash's perspective on the challenges other than in the classroom on the Bu-, City of Buffalo students. And that being, you know, related to community literacy, child poverty, violence in the neighborhoods, environmental concerns. I mean, these are challenges unlike those that any other school district outside the city has to, has to deal with. So I'm glad to hear, you know, other concerns other than worrying about, you know, kids' test scores, which obviously are affected by the environment with which they're growing. So I'm, I wanna just congratulate, you know, the people on the Buffalo School Board for having to deal with challenges other than what most other school boards around this community have to deal with. So I think it's very important, you know, to make a case with, you know, whether it's the, the mayor's administration and, you know, other, whether it's law enforcement or whether it's social services, that we engage, that the school district engage, you know, other, you know, agencies in trying to deal with what the Buffalo City students have to deal with outside of the classroom. And, and to me, you know, it gives a perspective that which I don't think a lot of people consider when they're talking about, you know, what, what, what's going on in the mines and the environments and the culture of what Buffalo students have to contend with on a daily basis. So I'm glad that, that Dr. Cash put, put in, you know, in perspective, you know, what the school board has to deal with. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Ben, do you have any questions?
No, no further questions. We were just, you know, the county was happy to work with the school district on some initiatives throughout the, the past year with COVID, with their virtual learning centers and of course the direct aid districts, and I think that all worked out quite well. As we begin to pursue our, our broadband project, you should expect to be reaching, hearing from our subcontractor at some point to reach out and coordinate and see if our fiber network can be utilized to enhance services for you guys or your students at some point. So that'll be a big project over the next year and expect to hear from our consultant, ECC Technologies.
Thank you for that.
Sorry, Chair Woods, would you like to say anything? You're muted, Paula. Yep, there you go, Paula.
Hello? Oh, I just wanna say I appreciate the collaboration and the coordination points of, of your presentation. You know, I understand that the City of Buffalo got a $165 million, so both Buffalo Public Schools and the City of Buffalo have been, have benefited from the work of our legislative bodies. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to redesign education, and that is a great benefit to our, to our community at large. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Jeff, I, I guess our question to you then is, now that we've solved all these problems, how are you gonna pay for it?
Dr. Cash had, wanted to input that before.
Okay, no problem. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna be able to, to pay for most of this with the funds that we're, that will be coming over these next several years. We, we, we've learned to be a very disciplined organization. We, we do not just spend money without an end in mind. And we know that a lot of people have given us a lot of trust to first have fought for these funds over a long period of time at different levels, whether it was federal, whether it was state legislators, Western New York legislators who, who care about Buffalo Public Schools and the education of our students, or whether it was a lot of local entities that have been fighting for fair and equitable funding for our schools. So I do feel that the way we're thinking about it and the way we've begun to conservatively cost out many, many of these things that are coming our way, particularly if we, as I think you mentioned, Secretary Floss, if we partner effectively and we strategically share resources in a smart way to solve not only Buffalo Public Schools' challenges, but some challenges that have accrued to all of us so that the quality of life can be improved for our city. So that's one answer, and I do think we're gonna be able to live within our means is, is my point. Now, there is one technical issue that I do have a question about, and that is, while I'm not a banker, I know a little bit about interest, and so the more money that you have, you should be able to draw a better interest rate. And I just wonder now that with the city getting a, a nice shot in the arm, the schools getting a shot in the arm, and yet our funds are kind of pooled, they're put together. And, and, and from what I understand by a recent auditor, that these, we're supposed to report earned interest in our ledgers, but the city is managing that right now. So I, I'm not sure it's fair with these combined millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, that only the city would accrue the interest on that. It seems that somehow that interest ought to be, ought to be shared proportionately for the funds when they're, when they're together like that over these next couple of years. And I was wondering if you, if you could weigh in on that, particularly since the city has borrowed money from the district for some years now to help them get through. They haven't had to go and borrow from a, a lending agency where you do in fact have to pay back interest. So I'm just trying to, as we go forward, I would like to see some of these things get a clearer, a clearer way of, of, of being managed. Can, can anyone weigh in on that? Because I, I think there's gonna be a lot of interest coming from these funds over these, over these next couple of years, and we would like our proportion to share. Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Go ahead, thanks. Executive Director Rogue, do you want to say something about that?
Sure. We had, I'm thinking of a couple of meetings ago, we actually had the City Controller's Office at our board meeting to talk about the cash management process. And this was one of the areas that I think was specifically questioned. I, I know it was specifically questioned. So at that time, we were told that the City Controller's Office was working at putting together some type of memo and some type of proposal to share with the school district to address the interest issue. I don't know, I, I don't know where that stands right now. I think from a, you know, from a management perspective, we, we tend to kind of defer these type of management decisions to those that manage the individual organizations. But I'd be more than happy to look at any proposal and provide any recommendations. I just haven't seen anything at this time, but I would certainly be more than happy to do that if it would be helpful.
And we could, you know, bring together the different sizes, have a discussion of that through the control board, and that's one of the reasons we're, I think, still here in a advisory capacity, because we've been able to bring different groups together to come up with solutions that help everybody. So we're more than willing to, to work with you on that and, and bring the Controller's Office together with that as well, so.
And, and may I add, in addition to that, we would also like to talk about making And may I add, in addition to that, we would also like to talk about making sure that the city is in the position not to continue to borrow money from the Buffalo Board of Education. I mean, I was a single parent at one point in my life and I had to make sure that my budget matched every month. Okay, so you got to excuse me for being prudent in that area. But I think there's enough funds right now that if properly managed, that we, we should not have this and we would be able to ultimately end up with our own accounts so that we can get some sort of reporting mechanism in place that we can have our own accounts, which is how the law under, I think, is 2580 municipal law requires that this money be held in a separate fund. So we need to, you know, work on making sure we're compliant with the law. Thank you. No disrespect to the city. We want to help the city at all top cost. But I think we're at a point right now that we can make some changes in some things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, to put some perspective on that, this whole process, it's all about cash management and the timing and receipt of the revenues and expenses. And, you know, that goes back in time when the city used to carry the Board of Education for their cash flow deficits as related to delays in, in the state budget. So the city would take on the expense of issuing revenue anticipation notes in order to help the, the school district be able to meet its payroll and other expense obligations. So at the time, because of delays in state budgets and the timing of when the, when the school district would get its significant portion of its state aid, that would be normally in the last quarter of their fiscal year, the City of Buffalo had to carry the school district with its own resources until such time that they would get their major, large payment in March, you know, or April, May and June. So, you know, I want to, it's not that the city borrows money, or in the past, it wasn't this, that the city borrows money from the school district. It's, it's a matter of a combined cash flow because that's how, that's how the, the, the city and the combined school district works on a cash basis. So it's sort of like a, a misrepresentation as to whether or not there's an actual borrowing going on. The, the fact remains is that, you know, I think with this infusion of significant federal and state aid, maybe there's a way to perhaps maybe accommodate on interest income. But don't forget, interest, interest rates right now, it's not based on how much money you have. It's just, it's, it's based on the Fed funds rate. So if they're willing to take, if the school district is willing to pay for a portion of the cost of issuing short-term debt for cash flow needs, then maybe we could address whether or not the city is willing to share in whatever interest income they get. And by the way, I haven't seen, you know, how mu, I haven't studied it or like, like Executive Director Rob said that, you know, I don't know what the, what the city is doing in a way of analyzing that possibility of sharing interest income, but I can't believe that it would be that significant in the event that if the cost of borrowing versus the cost of, of what they're generating in the way of interest income is that significant. So, but, you know, this, it's, it's sort of a, kind of a misrepresentation in thinking that somehow the city borrows from the, from the school district.
So can I comment on that? Because we need to be clear here, okay? And, and no one is bashing the city or anything like that. Whatever we can do to help the Brown administration, we are on record to do so. However, if the federal, if the funds come in, whether it's from the state or the sets, under specific guideline, we're supposed to have our own separate accounts and we're supposed to be doing it, irregardless of what happened in the past. This is today. We have new footing and we need to be about being as compliant as possible. As fiduciaries, we are responsible to make sure that we are following the law. Okay? Presently, what is going on is not following the law. So what may have happened years ago is over and done. We are moving forward and what we're trying to do in that process is to make sure that if in the event the city gets in a situation where they need to use the Board of Education's money, okay, then that we are informed, because you're right, there's certainly no borrowing because the money is just automatically used. Okay? And so we want to make sure that we put certain things in place to make sure that that's happening. That's what good, responsible leadership does. They make sure that they're following the rules and they're making sure that the principles of accounting are being followed and we're doing it in a correct way. No one is trying not to assist in the event that, that the, the city needs help or we need help. However, we need to have our accounts separated. That is what the law requires. Irregardless of what the maintenance of benefit has been over the past years, that does not equate to date to not doing it correctly. And as a fiduciary board, as a fiscal board, we're asking you, you asked us what we can do to move us forward. That's our concern. Our concern is making sure that if we get a federal audit or we get a state audit, that we are in compliance with that audit. And if our auditors are saying that we are entitled to interest, currently we're receiving interest on $49 million. There's upwards of 200 million plus that we are not receiving interest on. We can use that money to, if only, pay for a notebook for a kid. It is money that we need to know is, is coming to Buffalo Public Schools and not being disrespectful in any respect. That's what I just want to be clear on. We want to make sure we are in compliance. The way things are done in the past does not equate to what now they need to be done today. And so that's why we're asking for that conversation. That's all. And we can have it at another point.
Has, has it been determined that the city and the school district are out of compliance?
Well, certainly we didn't want to go there, but I can give you the law and you can take a look at it and you can read it. Paulette Woods was kind enough to bring it over to our attention. She has worked with Erie County budget over the years. And as Finance and Ops Chair, she was kind enough to point out that we have a problem here and we need to start working on fixing it.
Has that issue been addressed with the city's, city accountant, accounting firms and the law department and the mayor's administration?
We have started conversations with the Controller in regards to that, as well as she had additional people from the city at, at her meeting. And our Vice President Lou Patruchetti is moving forward. We're trying to get an additional meeting in regards to that. Okay?
Okay, I was just going to ask, I was just going to ask if there was someone from the state or from the City Controller's Office on, on, on this call to see whether or not the public accounting firm that does the city's books agrees with that.
Well, our accounting, yes, to our accounting, our accounting firm agrees with it. Okay, and they provided that to us in writing. Okay?
Well, like I said, this is something that, yeah, listen, I'm not aware of any compliance issues. I'm just concerned, I was just making, stating that, you know, that, that the issue is enclosed as far as I'm concerned, especially with the influx of this, you know, extra $280 million with the revenue that's coming in. So I'm sure something could be, could be arranged, but I, I think it's incorrect to point out that we're borrowing money from the school district.
No, you haven't borrowed it, you've just been helping yourself to it. Thank you.
If, if you want to send along any of those side letters or anything to Executive Director Rob, we would appreciate that. And again, we're here to, again, make sure that we're in compliance. That's part of what our job is. So there may be a disagreement between different accounting firms. I've seen that in the past. So I understand all of the issues, but to the extent that we can help in that discussion and resolve it, I mean, that's part of our.
Thank you. And we want to always be, work with the City of Buffalo. There's not an adversary relationship there. It's just that we are at the point in time where we need to be about making sure that things are correct, especially if we're going to be held accountable for, for things being not done in a correct way.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not aware, I'm not aware, at least historically, that somehow there's been an out of compliance issue relative to the city and the board's account.
Well, I'm sure Jeff Pritchett will be happy to share the findings from our latest audit or that audit, I'm not sure this is our latest, but that audit. And then in addition to that, we'll be happy to provide a copy of the municipal law in regards to that, the, the separation of funds.
Hi, this is Jeff Pritchett. I can probably, we, we can send along to the control board again, and I, I think they already have it, but we can resend it. The, the issue of non-compliance that our auditors raised was, it was with respect to, to, to education law where we have reserves, legal reserves. And their finding to us was, hey, if you have legal reserves, you have to allocate interest to them. So then we explained the issue to our auditor saying, well, we, we don't earn interest on this. We have pooled funds with the City of Buffalo and those funds, you know, the, the interest on those reserved, that we don't, we do not share in that. That is maintained, that is kept by the city. So the, the very specific item was about, about the reserves. There, there is a certain portion of our fund balance that we do earn interest on, but the, the bulk of our cash balance is, is not interest-bearing to the district. So, you know, and that, that's, that, that's the, really the question then is if, if the balances are contributed by the Board of Ed, you know, where, where should the interest earned on that go? The specific, again, the specific finding that they had was that for reserves, we are by law required to allocate interest to them. And again, we had, we had to essentially explain that we don't have that capacity because we don't have the interest.
Jeff, did, did they look at municipal law as well? Do we have two conflicting sets of principles here? Do we know?
No, that, well, their finding was with respect to education law and, and reserves. You know, the municipal.
But I mean, yeah.
Yeah, the municipal law relative to how the Big Five schools essentially are dependent on the city, you know, that, that's obviously probably the main point of dispute or contention that, that, that would be raised.
So we're going to have to, I, I think the question is obviously trying to figure this out and where both sides are going to be on this. You know, I would ask Executive Director Rob to put that on our list to be able to work with all of you. And to the extent that we can be an honest broker to try to help everybody work this out, I'm more than sure that we will. I'll put Chair Olson on the spot and make him in charge of it when I walk down. So.
Well, obviously, obviously, this is an engagement that has to take place between the school district and the City of Buffalo.
Yes.
I mean, it's something, it's something we look at, but I, I wouldn't think that we have a role in trying to make a determination as to what is correct and what isn't.
No, other than to bring it, other than if it helped, if we can help bring it together so that this is resolved as a financial issue, that's fine. But I think you're right, Director San Polipo, you know, it is, it's not our job to do that other than to be helpful.
I agree. And I, I can tell you two have taken some time to get ahold of other school districts just to kind of get a basis of comparison for what some of the other dependent school districts are doing, because as a dependent school district, you fall under different parameters than obviously the ones that can assess their own real property taxes. So like I said, I'm happy to look at any proposal. I'm happy to look at any item you can send over here. And if there's something from, you know, an advisory standpoint that we can do, more than happy to do so. So thank you.
I'd just like to say that the Controller, Barbara Melo-Williams, has been very cooperative in meeting with us and she recognizes the fiduciary responsibilities that the Board of Education has. We have provided her with the statutes and there are three major items of compliance that the board is being held accountable for. And we are working on an agreement to have transparency in the cash flow, to have transparency and prior authorization by the board on the use of Board of Education funds. But the audit that we received saying very clearly that generally accepted accounting principles require that we earn interest, we've shared that with both the Fiscal Stability Board and with the Controller. And as you're well aware, the Controller does not, by herself, require the mayor to pay interest. So that's, that, the Controller can write an agreement, obey, spell out the agreement for obeying the rules, the timing, notifications. But as far as the, the matter of clarifying and obeying the general accepted accounting principles that we must earn revenue, that we would probably need Mayor Brown to agree. And it honestly, before, given the financial problems and difficulties the City of Buffalo has been going through with their revenue estimates and realizing revenues, they've had significant difficulties. All of you have their cash flow statements, so you are well aware that we're up to possibly six months, the city has a negative cash flow situation. So they do rely on the Board of Education's funds. And that is something that as, we've all received a bailout assistance from the Biden administration. And we're, we are now, and the City of Buffalo are now in the, the area where we could resolve this. And it does need to be spelled out in writing and we would like to obey, as the president has said, the law, accounting principles, the public's demand for transparency and control of, of, of our inaccurate reporting of our finances. So the Controller has not really given us a big problem as far as agreeing on obeying the section, I believe it's 8250 of education law. And we, I'm sure we can send that to you.
That's great. We, we appreciate that and, you know, we will, you know, continue to do that. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
This is Director Jerisette. Maybe only to loop back to Dr. Cash talking about the vetting process, that is to say, creating the, the strategic priorities, which will stretch out five years. I, I think Dr. Cash said by July 1st, the public version will be, or rather, the, the public phase will be finished and then of course, the, the board vets that. Since it is our mandate, our mandate to think about and worry about long-term fiscal viability, we would be very pleased to see at least a, a rough version of the strategic and funding priorities, when it's available, I'm, I'm assuming in, in the fall. The way Dr. Floss always puts it is, we like to think that we're in a position to leverage. All right, good. But it is also our mandate on behalf of others is to worry about, lose sleep about the long, long-term viability of agendas. So, so again, to put that in a pointed question, when, when do you all think that we might see something that looks like a, a five-year plan, which is jump-started? It's jump-started by the federal money. But, but then, as I said, our, our concern is after the jumpstart, sustainability. When, when will the public and when will we see? sustainability. When, when will the public and when will we see something like the first version of this?
Jeff, do you have an idea?
Doesn't the city of Buffalo have the same requirements and deadline and scheduling as, as, as Buffalo Public Schools? I believe the American Rescue Act gave all of us the same deadline. So.
And we've asked them, we've asked them the same questions as well, where we'd like to see, once we've used the money from the federal government, once we get through the pandemic, then how do we make sure that we're on, whatever we've done, that we're on a sustainable budget path of, that makes sense. And, and again, we're here to sort of help you talk through that and be able to try to make some sense of that, not just for the city or the school district, but for all the covered agencies so that we can look at the big picture and make sure you're all, you know, working together and it's sustainable for, you know, the city of Buffalo.
So in short, I expect a polished draft about two weeks before school and at our August board meeting, for them to have a thorough look of a polished draft, an advanced draft. Certainly a first draft, a preliminary draft, I'm working to have available by the first week or two in July. That's, that is my goal and our goal as a staff. So.
Thank you, Superintendent. And when you do have, you know, some money behind, you know, or some financial priorities, you could send that over to Executive Director Rob. We would really.
Happy to.
So we can be of any help that we can be. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from anyone or statements? If not, this will conclude the meeting of the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority and I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, second. Zaga, thank you. All those in favor say aye. And I really appreciate everybody coming today. I think this was a very productive meeting and I'm looking forward to working with all of you as we go forward. So thank you.